Yeah, nobody's gonna ever talk about it anyway. Maybe Jennifer, my eyes kinda glaze over when she starts talking. I'm up for anything you say.
There she is. All right. Sorry for the delay. Welcome to the budget meeting. Roll call, please.
Yes, here.
Kelly Morris?
Here.
Sean Lucas?
Present.
Karen Houston?
Here.
Charlie Graham?
Here.
All right, we have already said the pledge of allegiance once today, so we'll just go ahead and get started.
I haven't said it.
Well, you weren't there, sorry. Ms. Lyles or Ms. Evans?
Okay, um, this is our agenda. We will go over revenues, and then we'll talk about operational expense, personnel, and then we'll end up with the capital improvement plans. So just to get started with the revenues, some noteworthy revenues are what's included in the budget as proposed is for sales and use taxes. For sales tax, we have budgeted a 2% increase over last year's budget numbers. And for use tax, we have increased it by 16%. And those are based on sort of actual year-to-date figures that we've got right now. Real estate tax revenue is based on the pro forma, and that's showing about a 7% increase. Our rate actually went down, but the assessed valuation has gone up, so that is resulting in a 7% increase. And then we have some bond proceeds, eight million in the water fund and 12.4 million in the wastewater fund. Now Matt is going to talk about some fee changes in parks that will affect his revenue budget.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Just a few quick notes that we are proposing through the budget is to raise the pool admission rate. The admission rate has been the same since about 2021, so about five years now. We are, proposed in the budget is to go up $1 per person, although I'll tell you that the area would support up to two and still keep us pretty economical. But we put the $1 increase, we'd take our morning and evening swim activities to $4, resident general swim for $6, and non-resident to $7. So you can also see we could go to 5, 7, and 8 and still keep up. The thing that's important to note since our last raise, minimum wage has increased $4.70 an hour per employee. So since 2021 to what will be 2026, that's a $4.70 increase per hour per employee. And so it's a very large increase over that four years for those employees. We would also then change and propose a change to the season pass rate for the pool and go to a per-person rate, which is a little different than what we've done in the past. Typically, we would do a first person in a household and then each additional head of a household would have a lesser fee, if you will. This would iron everything out to be a per-person rate. So in the preseason, we would go to 55 for members and residents and then 70 for non-residents. Season passes for during season would go to 55 for members, 65 for residents, 80 for non-residents, which is an average increase per family of about $35. So again, keeping with that same general rate that you would see if we did that dollar an hour increase. And so then again, you can see that $4.70 increase per hour. We would also then evaluate and look at concession items. As those continue to climb, we would reevaluate our concession items and ensure that we were getting the most that we can for those items. Raise pavilion rates, an additional $5. With our, especially Macaulay Park amenities that we've added, the playground, the splash pad and things, the pavilion rentals are really big. And so increasing that $5 an hour will keep us staffed to clean those and try to clean those in-between parties throughout the course of those days during our major traffic times. Would take that to $15 an hour for a pavilion rental. I believe there's one more? Nope, that was it.
How many staff members are usually there to clean the pavilion after the fact, and how long does it take?
It's usually one. It's our part-time. They work from in the building and out to those bathrooms and the pavilions during that high-traffic time. So I think more summertime type activities. We do check them in the spring and the fall, but it's typically higher in the summer in that usage. And it takes probably about 20 to 25 minutes per, because there's five to six trashcans down there that they would need to empty, haul to the dumpster, and refill with trash liners, and then check the bathrooms at the same time. And so you're talking two to three trips down there per day.
So at $15 an hour, we're, might be breaking even, once you consider the trash bag, the $7.50?
With the additional increase, yes.
Okay.
If you're thinking three hours, let's just round it to three hours a day, $5 an hour. They would be spending the rest of their time indoors during the indoor cleaning and things, so it would balance pretty close.
How many, and I don't know if you would even know the answer to this, but how often do you think people rent that that are not NICSa residents?
Oh, that's a great question. Would you have any guess, Katie? Yeah, we can get you a number for that, but I don't have that.
Because I would be okay having a higher fee for non-NICSa residents, because I like providing benefits to the taxpayers. I don't want to steer people away who would also come into NICSa and then, you know, shop local and things like that, but I still think.
I would guess that the numbers.
$15 an hour, that's cheap. I mean.
It's pretty nominal.
Yeah, that's.
For the space.
So even along those lines you had earlier where like the membership fees for the pool, the park fees. Maybe you can do the same thing. Hey, members can get it for this, residents can get it for this, and then non-residents for that.
We certainly can do that.
I kind of structured it the same way. So you can still offer the $15 an hour for members of the X center and then have a different fee for non-members and then have a different fee for non-residents.
Yeah, we can prepare that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was actually gonna say on the, on your pool admission fees for the daily fees, I meant raising a dollar, we would support two. And we've already got a huge increase in the minimum wage. I meant, why not go ahead and take that?
At least match the increase.
I'm sorry.
Well, I was just saying.
Matching the increase of the passes with the increase in minimum wage.
But the dollar, the daily fee, the very first slide, we had the daily fees. So you're saying right now we're at $3, $5, and $6 currently?
Correct.
But you said the area would support a $2 increase? I mean, we're having a $4.70 increase in minimum wage. How many lifeguards do we have on duty at any one point in time?
General swim, you typically have around nine to 10 lifeguards on at a time.
So let's say it's 10, that's $45 an hour that we've increased in our salary right there.
Yeah, and to me, it's a lot easier to swallow if it's a, for the residents, if it's a chunk at once. Instead of each year continuing to go up, and I would hate to not go to where we need to be and then next year be like, well, we actually lost money this summer.
I was thinking, because last year didn't we talk about membership fees?
Those are the programs.
Yeah, we raised membership fees.
I mean, that was kind of the same conversation we had last year. Instead of taking baby steps to this, let's just.
And I mean, everyone wanted minimum wage to go up to 15, and you can't expect that to go up and.
Not everything else.
Everything else not go up as well.
Would you like to look at the $2 on the pool general?
I would say yes.
And then, speaking of programs, would you want to raise the non-resident rate there even more?
Uh, what is it currently? Can we go to that slide, please?
I don't have a slide on that currently.
Oh, you're talking about the actual membership?
Programs.
Programs.
Four programs.
Didn't we do that last year, though?
It's currently 64.
Didn't we raise them last year?
We did.
Yeah, and I think, because I think we would have hadn't said, let's just take that chunk then.
But I would reevaluate that as well. I mean, because again, it's growing. And we need more people.
You speak of the benefit for a resident, we are quickly approaching that time that most of our programs, especially on the sports side, will be capped out. That we will hit those maximum rates. So if you raise the non-resident rate further, it might discourage some of those non-residents from coming, creating more room for our residents.
Well.
We aren't quite there, but we are very, very close.
When we get to that point where we're gonna have to start saying people no, then I think the first people that get told are non-residents.
Yeah.
Well, and that could, I mean, stair stepping your way into it by increasing the non-resident rates first in hopes to get more residents in the program and less non-residents. Not that we don't want people coming to NICSa, but we serve our citizens first.
Right.
That might be a better.
I think we are very, very close to that point in basketball, volleyball. The other sports still have a little bit of space left.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, so yes, I would say look at the non-resident.
So I will get some updated numbers to Jennifer, because we will have to update pool registration or daily admissions just a little bit to match, because I'd only done the $1. And so we'll adjust both of those, and I'll get some new numbers to her.
Perfect, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions about revenues? Okay, we'll move on to operational expenses. What you have before you on your budget dashboard shows the general fund down 9.26% over last year's budget. The street fund is down 10.77% over last year's budget, and by last year, I mean this year. Electric fund down 3.75%. Water fund is up 0.16%, and the wastewater fund is down 4.18% over last year's budget. I went ahead and.
Can you go back to that real quick?
Mayor and Council, while we're on that screen, I'll just comment that this is, you'll see those cuts this year, or next year, over what we've budgeted this year. We really have tightened the belt, so to speak, quite a bit this year. We've actually made two rounds of cuts to budgets. We've had to make some very difficult decisions, again, because as you see, moving forward, Jennifer will be showing you some additional slides on, you know, getting everyone to the 50th percentile and some of those things that, based on direction from Mayor and Council, we made that a priority. So we've really had to make some difficult decision operations, and I think that shows with the percentage of operational expenses next year compared to where we're at.
Thank you.
Yeah, I included, this is a chart showing what departments requested in their budgets for operations. And then what is presented, that's what you have before you, is in the presented column. And so you can see we've made $906,000 in cuts to what department had said that they needed for their operations. So mainly, we're cutting things like meetings and training, you know, just trying to be really conscientious of repairs and maintenance costs and things like that. So you can see that those numbers of the budget being down kind of translates into some of these cuts that we've had to make.
And then, while Jennifer's on that screen, I'll mention, you'll see most all departments made some pretty significant cuts. I will just mention, because you'll see the police department isn't in the red yet. Chief has been out of town. We do have second rounds of discussion on the police department budget still yet to happen. I can't promise what that'll look like until we have that set down and that meeting to go with the budget again.
Okay, Becca is going to talk to you about an opportunity we have to get a new codification platform. So take it away.
Yeah, so at the direction of council, we were asked to look at potentially what it would look like to move away from our current codifier, which is MuniCode, now Civic Plus. And the one that has the best reviews by clerks and other councils is General Code. And so that's who we looked at, and Nick demoed the system with me, and we, it's a great system. We would go for the code Ecode 360, and you'll see the items that they've got there that we would get within the subscription. So we would get the new laws or the new laws indicator. So that would just show within the code itself. It's a little gavel, and that would let you know that the code has been changed or there's potential change coming. The search feature is night and day to what we have now. It is significantly easier to find what you're looking for. So like fireworks would come up or noise would come up much easier than having to dig through all of the code right now. But there's still shareable links and printing. There's an archive view, public and private notes, and Nick and I thought this was a really cool function. We would each get, basically you could create a login to the code, and you could put in your own notes. So if Scott was working on a code change, he could go in and type notes next to the current code as to the changes that he would like to make, and then it's a symbol, very easy. He could share his notes with Nick within the code itself instead of a back and forth via email or imprint. Sample legislation, this would be for Nick. He could go in and query all of the codes that are out there on General Code currently. So he could look within the state and see what everybody else is doing instead of like Google searching. Download, Word and PDF is still the same. You can sign up for code updates. So if there's a news organization or yourself, if you want to see the next time that the code is updated, you can actually sign up for an update. So if you wanted to see like when the fireworks code changes, you could sign up. Anytime that that code changes, you would be notified. And then the public document model, this is one where we would put the tech spec, so that would technically be part of the code. And so instead of redoing our code, we could just upload it there if we wanted to. This could also handle agendas, minutes, code packets. If we wanted to make it a little bit easier access for the public, we could just put them in there, direct them to one place. Code, minutes, agendas, all in one. Codification, this was the big one. General Code is willing to give us monthly digital updates to the code, whereas Civic Plus does not offer that. They would only do quarterly. We would get biannual on the hard copies in the office. So that is the biggest thing with General Code, is we would get monthly updates to the code. So instead of waiting three or four months for a code update, it's right there. The conversion price to get us to General Code this year would be a little over $6,000 with an optional component of track back, which would help Nick see all of the changes to the code that have been made. That way, it's a little bit easier for numbering purposes. And we would request that track back if we did convert. So total conversion would be a little over $8,000, and then annual maintenance beginning in 2027 is almost $1,300 a year.
What do we pay currently?
I believe it's almost $6 a year.
$6,000?
For quarterly updates, or I'm sorry, for biannual updates, both digital and hard copy.
And this would only be $1,300 a year going forward?
So on the codification, is that, I mean, is that like guaranteed 30 days from when it's signed, or is it certain dates each month?
It would be a month behind. So all of your August would update September. September would update October. So it's not like we pass it, we pass something Monday and you're gonna see it the following week. It would still be a month behind. But that's way better than what we've got right now.
Have you found any negatives with this solution?
It's, I described the code as beautiful, and I never thought that I would describe municipal code as beautiful, but it really is. The tech spec model, it actually has graphs. So right now, when you like look at code of approved uses, you have to like scroll and scroll, and you're trying to like go, like it's one, it's beautiful. It's like an actual graph. And you can like click on it and it pops up. It's lovely.
What's it called again?
General Code.
General Code.
So I will mention that this is not currently in the budget. We wanted to present it for you to decide, but the current costs of what we pay, so close to $6,000, is in the budget. So really, the difference there is about $3,000.
And this is something that I've heard from council and mayor before about looking at other options, because it takes so long.
MuniCode is so common. It's hard to find anything.
That's why we wanted to bring it to you. We don't always bring all software to council, but we thought this was a good one to discuss, because it has been requested by council to be looked at.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah.
And it'll be branded, so it'll have our logo at the top, all of our brand standards, and they do all of it.
And I can't even find anything.
Any other questions on that?
Do we need to vote on that?
So we're gonna be about, the first year will be $3,300 more, or 30, yeah, $3,300 more than what we budgeted for this year, and then it'll be lower.
Five thousand after that.
And Mr. Lucas, we do not need a vote. We're just looking for direction. We'll take care of the budget.
Beautiful.
All right, moving on to personnel. This budget includes moving all staff to the 50th percentile. We are enacting a salary step program for the police department. It includes a 2.7 percent COLA. And our insurance rates, our health insurance is increasing 9.1%. Our dental is increasing 4%, and vision is staying flat. That's kind of a high-level view. We'll talk a little bit more detail here in just a second, but I also wanted to mention for, in the Parks Department especially, that the new minimum wage is really going to affect Matt's personnel budget. It's going from $1,375 to $15. And so, did you want to mention anything more about that? Just to know that that's why some of his line items are increasing as far as salaries go.
I don't necessarily have anything extra to add. It's just one of those activities, try to note to you guys what that increase looks like. And if you take it by the number of employees that we have throughout the course of the year, it's a lot. So when you see those numbers really increasing in the salary side, it's all right there.
So if you have someone who started at $1,375 and now they're up to $1,475, are they gonna be bumped up to 16?
Well, so, yeah, yes. Technically, not all positions make minimum wage. Some do make more, and everyone is jumping that $1.25 from this year to next year.
Good.
Could you go back a screen before we get too far ahead? Okay, just wanted to make a couple of comments here on the, especially on the step program for the police department. That is a different philosophy moving forward with what council is used to. So I just wanted to make sure that we at least talk about that briefly with council. That will be a step program based on a number of years that either they're here or within their position, depending on the promotions within the department. As is laid out, we utilize CBIZ. If you remember, we did the compensation study with CBIZ several years ago. They provided us at that time a step program. We elected then not to move that direction, but after visiting with chief's staff last year during the meeting, one thing I heard from them is several of them wanted us to really consider the step program again. So chief and I visited quite a bit about this and visited with Jennifer as well and looked at the budget. So we are proposing to enact that step program starting this following year. So I just wanted to make sure that, that step program is a set amount per year that would increase, like whereas generally speaking, once we're caught up on salaries, generally we have a merit increase for all the employees. That merit increase is based on performance and the performance review. The step program does not work the same. The step program is a set number that the officer will get each and every year, regardless of performance. That is not tied to the performance. That's how a step program works. But it doesn't mean that, there are other ways, obviously, that a lack of performance is handled. It's just not dealt with in the salary part. It is very, very common in the police world to do a step program and in the fire world, as far as that goes, too. It is a very common way to do salaries. So I am in agreement. I think it's a good move. I think it's something the officers, you know, I think would appreciate. I can't speak for all of them, obviously, but I did hear from several of them. And Officer Fleetwood's here, if you'd like to comment if he's heard that or anything different, obviously, but that is some of the feedback that I got in visiting with chief.
Jim, when you and I talked about this a little bit, you hadn't met with chief to kind of go over it, but you did say that you had some concerns moving to this program. What made you change from those concerns?
So honestly, the concern was that with the step program, it could actually equivalent to a less amount of money per year per officer than what the merit increase would be. For example, the merit increase is, we generally, it depends on council each year, but generally, we've done a 3% in the past for merit. That means an employee can get up to 3% increase. Step program is much less than that. It's like a 1.7%, 1.9%. It varies a little bit, and it's not, there's a formula for that. But, so over time, obviously, the officers' increases could potentially get less than the rest of the city. But again, that's how the step program is set up. That's been my hesitation, because I obviously was trying to get the officers the most money possible in the salaries. But after visiting with them, I mentioned that last year, again, I heard that they wanted, would rather know what they're getting each year. And again, that's something that chief presented that he would like to do, and so I can support that. But that was a lot of my reservation.
One of the challenges they had with the traditional way we're doing the salary scale is that it did not, it did not handle lateral moves very well. So like if we have an experienced officer coming in and they want to pay him a little bit higher, him or her a little bit higher, it washes out the next year, because the way we do the salary calculations, now it's based on the time in your position. And so a step program, if you hire someone in and you start them at step three, then the next year, they go up to step four, and it keeps that gap whole, if you will. So that's one of the challenges that they had with the way we were doing it, and one of the reasons they really wanted to switch.
And does COLA get factored into the step program?
Yes, COLA is still added every year, January 1st, so that will still remain. And then I'll also mention that, I had mentioned they get that increase every year. There is the option for council to freeze those steps at any given point, especially if we have a year where budget doesn't allow those increases. We can do freezes within the step and then catch those up later down the road. So some organizations have had to do that in the past. So I just want to make sure council know it doesn't necessarily lock you in, but it is giving the officers an idea of what they will make each year.
Did we, a few years ago, do, try to move the officers up quicker to that 50th percentile rather than the rest of the staff or something like that? Did we do an increase like that?
Not with the, not with the officers. We did them the same, the 27.5 percentile last year, just like we did.
Okay, we did that with everybody last year? Okay, for some reason, I thought we did the officers a year before that.
No, we did them 27.5%. Now, that's a good point, though, you mentioned about the 50th percentile, Mr. Lucas, because this, the step program does move all of them to the 50th percentile. So it's not, that is factored into the CBIZ step program. So they will be at the 50th percentile as of January 1st.
So we're gonna move them to the 50th and then start the step? That's kind of what you're saying?
This is just kind of a chart to show you. This is just kind of a chart to show you sort of the personnel costs between twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, as you'll remember, streets, water and wastewater, most all of their staff, we went ahead and moved to the fiftieth percentile for twenty-twenty-five, so their lines are kind of flat. Um, so this would be the general fund, the electric fund, and a few positions within those other, um, funds. That's just kind of a picture, the blue, blue line is twenty-twenty-five, the black line is twenty-twenty-six. So what does it cost to move us to the fiftieth percentile? You can see by department how much it's costing. Um, the total, the bottom line there is about five-hundred-and-three-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Um, so this includes, um, all the staff, all of the vacancies, and, um, should be pretty close. This is, um, salaries, social security, Medicare, loggers. So, that first column is if we would, were to stay the same as how we're doing it now, and calculating based on the, the grades that we have now, the salary scales we have now. And then the second column is the fiftieth percentile ranges, and then the difference, and then the percent of difference. Any have any questions about that? Okay. So personnel costs, twenty-twenty-five versus twenty-twenty-six. Now, the, the numbers are a little different because personnel costs include uniforms, and meetings and training, and mileage, and things like that, where as that previous chart was just salaries and a couple of benefits. So, um, in the general fund, it's, our difference is one-point-four-six million dollars, or twelve-point-one se, twelve-point-seven-one percent. The street fund is, um, up forty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-twelve, or three-point-five-seven percent. Electric, water, and wastewater are actually down, um, that's for a variety of reasons, couple of retirements coming up. Um, in the water fund, we kind of over-budgeted in utility billing for this year because we had some staffing changes and some overlap, and so that is why they're down. Um, but those are the numbers for, um, general and street going up, and the rest going down. Okay, the next couple of slides are the additional headcounts that were requested by staff. These, um, are not included in the budget you have before you, but we wanted just to show you what has been requested. Um, well, I will say that the move from assistant multimedia communication specialist from part-time to full-time, that is included in the budget, um, but the rest of them are not. So, um, in administration, a deputy city clerk was requested. Um, in finance, a purchasing assistant, this is a new position, but we will be using existing staff to move into that position, so it's not an additional headcount. Um, in the police department, seven officers, um, a community service officer part-time, this would be a person to handle the dog pound over the weekend. Um, and moving the building maintenance person from part-time to full-time, that was the police department's request. In parks, a recreational specialist was requested. In planning and development, a paid intern. In the electric department, a general foreman. In water and wastewater, they requested a utility worker that they would split between those two departments. And in streets, they requested two additional utility workers. So if you had any questions for department heads as far as why they needed these positions, or more explanation, you, feel free to ask.
Again, these, these other positions are not currently in the budget, so the numbers you'll see tonight, and on the dashboard you're looking at before you do not, do not include, uh, these additional positions, other than the communications position. Um, that doesn't mean they will or won't be, the rest of them, they're just currently not in there, uh, because again, our, our priority first was salaries and operations and CIPs, and now we're, we're looking at what can be afforded in these positions. So tonight, we're just kind of looking for some feedback from the mayor and council, um, as we move forward as, as we have to make these decisions on personnel.
Can we go back one slide? Thank you.
Anybody have any questions on any of these?
You said the community service officer for part-time for the police was for the, the pound over the weekend?
Yes.
Apparently, okay.
Yes, I believe so.
I'm so sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The community service officer would be to help over the weekend at the.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Fleetwood answer that.
Yeah, the idea behind this position would be to take some workload off on the common care, uh, specifically during the weekend, but also if, um, you see a recent die after hours, or, or, right now, before the.
And I'll also add to that, that currently, to help cover, especially weekends, we're paying personnel from other departments in the city, uh, more times than not overtime to cover that currently.
And then on the, can you go to the next slide? Um, on the bottom three, electric, wastewater, water, streets, um, the thought on that for right now isn't necessarily a, a no forever, it's more of who would be hiring them? If Mr. Calvin is retiring, I mean, whoever takes his place, what if they don't like the four people that are hired? Um, and it more or less needs to be their decision, whoever takes that position, their decision going forward as opposed to someone here, so.
Yeah, we could, we could definitely, um, look at putting those positions even on contingent with the understanding that if, if another, whenever we do hire Mr. Calvin's replacement, and if that is the recommendation, then we could come back to council, just realizing that, that would be a budget amendment, but I think that would be a planned budget amendment. Um, would, but I would just make sure that we would, if that's the direction, we would look at putting them on like a contingent.
Yeah, no, knowing the, the idea behind those four, um, I would think that would be a, a good move on our part to go ahead and put them on contingent. It is positions that I are definitely needed.
Well, we have, uh, office space for a deputy city clerk, for a, a fi, another finance person.
The finance person isn't another, it's, it's one, it's, it's a lateral.
It's a lateral move?
Move, it's a current employee.
Oh, I thought these were headcount requests meaning to increase, adding to person, oh, but reducing the financial, finance position.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just moving, we won't be backfilling in finance, so. Um, as far as your question about another office, currently, no, but when the remodel's done.
Well, that's what I was getting at, is when the remodel's done, are we still, are we gonna have this additional offices?
I think we, we, after the remodel, I think we have one open office.
Okay.
And I don't know if, I want to give the opportunity, if, if Doug or Travis or anyone else in public works wanted to comment on the positions at all, you're more than welcome to do that.
On the paid intern for planning and development, is that, uh, seasonal or part-time, or how would that work?
Yeah, it would be based off of a school semester, which would be the requirement to have an internship for at least one semester. Um, we would go minimum wage.
So we, they would have, have that position for two semesters, or three, or what, what's the?
Just one.
Just one semester?
So it's required part-to-year.
Okay.
And I, I, I will chime in, because I have spoken to Mr. Gavi, as he's smiling like that. I'm not trying to rain on his parade, but, um, it is a discussion I had, and honestly, I think my recommendation would be to wait on the paid intern, if we're able to get an intern unpaid, which it is possible. I'm more than happy to do that, but with the, with the serious cuts we've had to make in general fund, I am a little more nervous about adding that intern paid position when we've cut some other things that could honestly probably use that money somewhere else. And again, I love internships, hundred percent behind them, I just think maybe the following year may be the time to consider that. But that's just, but I am open for council's discussion, and that, that's why we're here. Yep, and I, and Scott can argue with me too.
I think these are also things you can think about throughout the year as well. Um, you know, we budgeted sales tax revenues very conservatively, um, so if that was to change, and, you know, come June, July, August, feel a lot better about things, um, that's something we can always go back and look at these items.
Yep, and I, I just saw Mr. Coste reaching for the mic a while ago, wanted to make sure you didn't have any other comments, I didn't want him to.
What I was gonna ask, you know, if there's any questions on, on what the idea behind them was, obviously, the workload i, when it comes to the street departments, it's just the additional workload that we've experienced, and Jeff's experienced with, um, the increase in, in just general maintenance of not only the facilities, but just the town as a whole. Of course, we're still growing. Water wastewater department, that utility worker, this is a split posi, position that will also help alleviate some of the pressure that the street department gets. Um, Jason's looking to add a utility worker that would not only be in charge of maintaining the grounds at the water quality facilities, but would also provide an increased level of, uh, help when it comes to, say, hydrant maintenance and hydrant exercising. State requirements are increasing on the frequency in which we need to do that, and having that additional utility worker that was split between water and wastewater would help exercise valving systems on the, um, both the wastewater and the water system, as well as hydrant flowing and maintenance of a lot of just issues that we're unable to take care of currently because of the lack of personnel. So that's where that split position come from. And a general foreman is, um, on the electric department, is an individual that would be elevated to be kind of a crew runner. We have our existing electric crews, and that individual will be in charge of running those, those, uh, crews that we have, which would free up some space and time in the assistant and, uh, superintendent position for the electric department to start increasing some of their job duties.
Mr. Coste, can you refresh my memory, whenever we met with DNR, were they talking about our size of city on the wastewater and new regulations for twenty-six, or was that just smaller?
Are you referring to the ammonia requirements?
Yeah.
Yes, no, those are not gonna apply to us.
Okay.
Our systems, our systems, um, too advanced and too large to qualify for those ammonias. So luckily, we're, we're evading those, but we are anticipating the increase in the PFAS. We know that's coming, that's a train that has already left the station, we're just waiting for the regulations to land, so that's something that we're anticipating. Um, I think, I think we're good on the phosphorus, because we already meet all the proposed phosphorus limits. Those, those regulations are gonna be coming into play in the next couple of years, however, we're already exceeding those because of the James River Bay, the James River is a, uh, total maximum daily load TMDL river, so it's already had, has those phosphorus and nitrogen requirements added to it that other communities don't see.
The phosphorus, we've been treating phosphorus since two thousand and three, that was why we had to, that's why we had to redo the plant back in them days, but now, uh, since we're in the James River Basin, now we're gonna start dealing with nitrogen, and them, and them regulations are coming down the pipe. Uh, last I heard from, the last meeting I was at, we will be under full, um, they're gonna give us a trial period to either try to do, could cro, try to control nitrogen biologically, or chemically, or some kind of mechanical means, um, that's all gotta be in place by twenty-thirty-five. So right now, we are taking steps to try to control the nitrogen biologically. Um, it's, it's, right now, it seems to be working, but as the city grows, everybody knows that, I mean, the waste is gonna come in more, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to spend some money on the plant to make it. I don't think we'll have to spend a whole bunch of money, but we are gonna have to do some upgrades down there. And as far as that split position that, uh, you, Mr. Coste was talking about, DNR has come out with some regulations now on the water side that we are gonna have to start taking a yearly count of, uh, flushing what hydrants that we flush every year. Um, we're gonna have to start doing a lot of, you know, lateral flushing, and they're wanting to start exercising all the valves in town, um, yearly, and right now, we're up to about, I don't, we're close to ten thousand valves in town, so with the small crew that I have, taking care of the distribution system and the wells and towers and stuff, this extra person would really be a, would really be a blessing for the water department, so.
And they're gonna help with all that additional cost, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah, you know DNR's gonna spend some money.
And then, um, if there's more comments on those, I want to open it up to opportunity for any other department head, if you'd like to speak about your request, feel free to do so.
On the general foreman, uh, next year, I will be retiring in May, so your guys are all lucky on that card. Uh, but Chris will be moving up my position. Then he will hire someone for the assistant, and with us trying to find thirty megawatt, uh, power, uh, Chris will be working pretty close with Travis trying to find that, so I guess what we're saying is a lot of load is gonna come to Chris, or to Chris's assistant, and he's gonna need all the help he can get, and that's one of the main reasons we need the general foreman there, to kind of run it while Chris is gone, and help his new assistant.
I can be brief with you, the officer request, uh, we need to receive the stats from our, our clerk this month. We'll notice this year, so I would ask you, would you consider those positions, you see the stats are down for this year. Uh, there's a good reason for that, um, we've been training nine officers this year, so two officers need to be equal. Uh, that's reduced our raw activity capabilities. We are, are working to backfill after our restructure, and we are working to get towards that number we needed several degrees ago before the tax passed, um, to add that additional, uh, of officers. Uh, some other stats I would point to, uh, that are concerning for me when I'm looking at our operations in that September stat we got, our response time is increasing, we've battled over thirty seconds to our, our one-two calls. Uh, it takes us a little longer to get there because we are a little bit busier. And look at the multiple unit calls, because we're spending more time with multiple officers on multiple calls at a time. Uh, we're having to send more officers to more serious calls, uh, we've had recent injuries, we're, there were recent calls for service where our officer had injured, had to have surgery, so we have to have some downtime this year with officers out, and it's also affecting our, our core active numbers. So, um, our multiple unit calls are actually at about five percent this year. So when you look at those, and you see a lower number of calls for service, that's not a big deal about our actual workload and what we're being staffed for, I believe we gotta get to those higher numbers to, to support our operations and to maintain our effectiveness. Um, you probably want us to go up to number six instead of number four, and we've got to maintain our active, uh, loss.
So I guess one thing that I would ask, um, of the council is, think about this and what we've talked about, and provide some feedback to myself and Mr. Lyles, um, on these positions. And I guess, one, our philosophy on either holding off on some, or whatever we've decided. Um, and then we can look into that before the next meeting. Because I hate putting you on the spot to.
Yeah, but you said that we, we have forty-seven current officers, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's what we had last year, and we approved to hire two this past year, but we're still at that same number, right?
It's forty-seven, correct? Yes.
But, okay, so what we're looking to, they're asking for seven, but we still have two that we haven't filled from this year. Is that correct?
Another thing to think about, actually, sorry to interrupt you, um, to think about, and I, it really didn't hit me until right this second, whenever you started talking about. whenever you started talking about that, is, I don't know the timeline, but there's also gonna be a push. They're working on the video for recruitment. So that's another thing to think about when we're looking at this, is you have a recruitment video and.
Don't have a good hire candidate.
Yeah, yeah, so, sorry, go ahead.
We do have three openings right now, one of those, two of those being the positions we have. I am happy to say I have three people backgrounds for those positions now. So I will.
Awesome.
By the first December, we must have to be ready to ask for more officers. The recruiting video, I know the communication partners work really hard on that. And from a recruiting perspective, we're at a really, really good time in our country to be recruiting police officers. People are moving all over the country, kind of working as part of the country. We fired nine officers this year from all parts of the country, from Florida, to Kansas City, or Eastside State. And we're attracting people from all over the place. And we're here to visit, to support. We want to keep that momentum moving forward. Push us to be recruited, to be staffed.
Awesome. You think Chief would be upset if I just had the captain come back every time? If he's watching, I'm sorry, Chief. You're just nicer.
Yeah, as the mayor said, as we, as we forward, please, again, don't put you on the spot tonight, but please give me some feedback, the mayor some feedback. Obviously, just to be upfront, we cannot hire seven officers this year. We can't afford to do that all in one year. But we have been slowly chunking away at that each year. And as I spoke with Chief, he realizes that. But he's asking for seven because he's keeping up with what the original, you know, demand was back whenever they did the study, so.
And you can also look at, you know, what we did last year, which was approved to, and then with the understanding that if there was, you know, good candidates that came in and they needed to get extra, that we would be okay with a budget amendment coming back.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking if we could get those three spots filled and they hold through to the first quarter of the year, then maybe we can look into the second quarter of offering two more or something like that. I mean, 'cause, 'cause there's, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a reason to budget more if we can't keep what we have currently filled, that's currently budgeted. So that, that's my key. And it's not, not a knock, I know people change jobs, life situation changes. People get hurt, people decide this isn't for me, all kinds of reasons why people leave that position. But it's a matter of us keeping that position filled and keeping it fully staffed before we go and say, okay, we're gonna budget for seven more officers when we are struggling to keep what we can, we already have budgeted filled.
Understand.
I mean, that's kind of what I was thinking, is like, let's stair step it instead of trying to do it all at once.
Yep, so think about those and all the others on the list. And provide your feedback.
Okay, let's move on. Capital improvement plans. You should have a list at your seat. Of the capital improvement plans? Oh, go ahead.
Jennifer, before we move on to CIPs, I want to just touch on a couple of things in, in operations or expenses before we do that. One of the things that we've been talking about internally, and obviously I would invite Jeff and Travis and Doug, whoever wants to chime in. But one of the things we've been talking about internally is we, as I said earlier, we've had to make some very difficult decisions in operations this year. And one of the things that has came up for conversation, and I want to talk to council about tonight, is the mosquito spraying. And I know that that has been, gone both ways in the past. But again, I think it's worthy of another conversation, because again, again, we've made some significant cuts elsewhere. And I think it's something that we, I would like to at least bring up to talk about.
Aight, aight.
I'm sorry, cost, can you remind me of what you think total cost with salaries and equipment?
Yeah, I don't have a hard number on salaries, but the chemicals, we usually spend about 50 to $55,000 on chemicals. And I would, just for discussion purposes, double that for overtime rates. And then the wear and tear on the vehicle that we have to use to provide for, it does, it does take one of our trucks out of service, basically for the summer, to have the mosquito machine mounted on it. Obviously, there's wear and tear on that vehicle. That vehicle rolls five nights a week, so we have overtime to our street department personnel, five nights a week for three or four hours. Or, sorry, two hours. Two hours, two hours, two hours in the evening, five days a week that we have in overtime salary. So it is a pretty significant cost to the community to provide that product.
Well, as someone whose neighborhood has benefited from mosquito spraying, please don't stop. We have all these mosquito breeders over in District Three, and they're awful. I mean, they'll carry you off, they're that bad. So, and I'm one of those people who call and say, when are they coming out? Because people call me and ask me when they're coming out. So if we can keep it in anywhere, I would appreciate, at least this side of town.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen. Nine dollars, you can treat your own yard.
Well, I guess so, but.
Can we have Scott's unpaid intern drive the truck?
Yeah.
So thinking outside.
I'll drive the truck.
That's a good, sort of, that's a good lead. Thinking outside the box a little bit, why are we, I mean, whoever's running that truck for those two hours, that's 10 hours of overtime is what you're saying, a week? I mean, whoever has that, can't we just schedule it like two hours later to start and it not be overtime?
But then, then we're not being able to, we're, you gotta remember, we're asking for two additional personnel because the street department has trouble keeping up with their normal workload. I mean, this is additional to a normal workload, so. It would, it would be a reduction in services on normal maintenance and street department item, just normal operations.
I get it, that's why I said, just take it outside the box.
Yeah, yeah, great question.
Trying to find another way to fund it.
Yep, yep, we've thought about that too.
I think it's something we need still.
Darlene will drive it in her own, in her own district.
Whoa.
I do, I mean, I realize that, this unpopular opinion, but it's a luxury, for sure. It's something that people can do on their own. That's, I mean, mosquitoes come out before that truck starts spraying. And I get a nine dollar bottle of the yard spray that hooks onto the water hose, and I spray my yard, and then I wear bug spray when I go outside. And I'm fine. Still alive.
You come and sit on my deck at seven o'clock at night.
With my bug spray, I'll be just fine.
One thing I also forgot to mention in the operational budget, we do not have the rates for our property and liability insurance at this point. But this budget does include a 20% increase, which is kind of what we're hoping it stays below that, but we wanted to make sure we accounted for that, but we don't have those rates yet.
And, and that is a point of concern for me, because it's, at my understanding, it's a minimum 20%. We could potentially see higher. I don't know if Becca's heard anything recently, but that's the last I heard.
No, so Travelers is still looking at our applications. Since we switched brokers, we had to fill out a whole new application round. The broker did say that we should prepare for 20%, but there's a good chance, because of some of the large claims that we have still pending, that it could be higher.
And, not to be the bearer of bad news, but the other concerns that I have with operations is we are still waiting for some finalized numbers from our new IT company on budget. We've got some preliminary estimates, which are astronomical, to be honest with you, compared to what we expected. And I'm not sure, we have to figure out what can be afforded. Again, it's those difficult decisions we're having to make this year. But that's one of the reasons I want to bring up these other things, such as mosquito spraying and things like that, that we need to consider. Because we, they are recommending us replace a lot of computers, as well as servers. It's gonna be a significant number. We'd hope to have those numbers before you tonight. We asked for them, but we just haven't got them yet. So we're still working with the company on that.
And when we started down this process, one of the main things that I told Mr. Lyles is we really have to identify the wants versus the needs. Because, well, with the price of everything going up, you never know when something might happen in the community and half a million dollars later. And, I mean, things have to be fixed. And you think of what has to be done versus a luxury. You have to pray for the worst at times.
Although I respect your comment about buying your own bottle of bug repellent or whatever for your own yard. That doesn't, the mosquito truck doesn't just treat the neighborhoods, it treats the facilities that we have around and stuff like that, and helps control the population.
Our guys go throw the biscuits in the ponds. HOAs can do that. They're pretty cheap, actually. I mean, there, there's a point where, I've always been a huge fan of less government, and it seems like every year, it's more government, more government. Take care of this, take care of that. At some point, you gotta take care of stuff on your own.
Well, I don't think we can get the school to put those dunks in their stuff, because that's the, in our neighborhood, that's the big thing.
Your microphone's not off.
In our neighborhood, over.
Where, over by the school, they have a huge pond. And then we have another one over by Matthew's. And then there's other sinkholes in the area, and they fill up, and they don't drain. And that's where the majority of mosquitoes come. There was a year, a few years ago, where the school wouldn't let the kids go outside and play because the mosquitoes were so bad. So I'm just putting it out there, it's something, our motto is, you know, neighbors committed to an exceptional quality of life, and if we don't.
So that's when neighbors help neighbors. Go buy the damn biscuits and put them in the pond.
I'm not spraying the schoolyard, and that's where they come from mainly, so. Just a thought. And I'll drive the truck, Jared.
I'm not sure. We put it on a Prius? Oh yeah, you changed, sorry.
I would.
No, it's just there's things that we really need to be looking at. I mean, that's an employee.
We'll follow whatever direction the council wants, but I wanted to bring it up for conversation, because we've had the internal discussions.
Yeah. I mean, because I just, I see that total cost, and that's an employee that we could be putting in a department that needs help.
Yeah, and, and honestly, I am, you know, going with that theme in operations. I'm very concerned about the expenses that's occurring, well, I'll say expenses occurring, how far down we're getting our, our reserves in the street department because of the ongoing maintenance that we have to do with our streets and things like that. We are going to have to figure out another option for the streets. I mean, we don't, we're getting to the point to where, we're there. I know we've had that conversation with council a few times in the past at different workshops over the last couple of years. And I think Mr. Colvin talked about it quite a bit this year at the, at the council workshop. But we're there. We're to the point to where we had to make some, and you'll see in the CIP cuts we're getting ready to go into, we've had to make some decisions. And we're gonna have to probably make some very difficult decisions moving forward. We just don't have the funding needed to do some of the street projects that we need done. So that's also contributing to this conversation, because those funds do come out of streets, and I think some other funds as well, but it's a, it's a big expense. So, but that's why we're having the conversation.
Okay, ready to move on to capital. So you've got your sheet. We'll just go through the list, and each department will speak to their capital projects. So we'll start off with administration.
Oh, sorry, I was waiting for it to come up on the screen. I forgot, it's not on the screen. I got it here in front of me. Yeah, we'll start with the administration CIP list. So as you can see, in administration, the requested for 2026 is a rollover of the city hall remodel. Of course, that project was approved for this year. It is an ongoing project. It will definitely roll over in the next year. I don't know if you had an opportunity to go down the other end of the building, but if not, we'd love to take you. It's looking fantastic. Very pleased with the work being done. But again, that will roll over, so we had to roll it over. Is currently slightly over budget. There was some unexpected expenses whenever we opened up that end of the building, such as, we learned there was zero insulation down there. Surprise, right? So we had to fix that, you know. So there were some other few things like that, that we just had to address. So it is slightly over budget. Sometimes that's expected with a whole part of a building, as old as that part of the building is. But, so anyway, we did add that. It is included in the CIP again for this year. Again, that cost is spread out among all the, all the funds. And then the other CIP for 2026 is, is the downtown parking lot. You know, currently, that is a gravel lot. It is not paved, so if you, I'm talking about the place where it has gravel. Technically, it's not a parking lot, but people are using it because we have gravel on it, right? We would like to go ahead and get that paved and make that an official parking lot with the expansion of the businesses we've seen in the downtown area, additional people parking down there. You know, parking is starting to become an issue that we need to address. My recommendation for that is to not take that $40,000 out of general fund unrestricted reserves. Again, because I am concerned about those numbers coming down. I would recommend we take that $40,000 out of our savings account or restricted fund out of economic development. We have $800,000 in that fund that we've had saved for economic development purposes specifically. And I think this fits very well into that, because it is the potential development of future businesses in downtown and taking care of the growth that we're seeing down there. So that would be my recommendation on that CIP, so it doesn't affect the unrestricted funds or the operational expenses. That, because again, that's, that's where we're headed.
On that specific project, there's like two pipes that are, if you come down the road, like you're coming out, there's two lines that are up in the ground. So if you try to make a turn either way, depending on how wide you make that turn, you could possibly hit those. If we're gonna pave that, are we gonna look at relocating those?
I will see if Public Works has a comment on that. I'm not familiar with that, actually, Mr. Lucas, but.
I'd ask the guy in the suit.
There's a little hydrant right there, and the water valve for the hookup for, like when we have sucker dazer stuff for the food trucks and stuff. And that was the reason why the pipes are there, so people wouldn't run over it, and we have to go out there and repair it.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, if we, if we're gonna pave that, and that's gonna become more of a public lot, I can see that be get, get hit a lot more. So will we be looking to relocate that?
Have we changed the infr?
They could be installed inside of.
So it's, it's not.
It's right in the middle. I don't even know where we're at.
So when you come, if you're, so if you're in the general parking lot now, there's a road that kind of goes out to 14, kind of behind those buildings right there. But it also comes in right into that parking lot. And I, I've heard people talk about how they get deliveries, and they, sometimes the trucks have a hard time making that turn out of there. And so that's, that's a concern that I would have with us going ahead and making that an official parking lot. If we're still gonna have these two up there, how often are we gonna replace those water lines, hydrants, or whatever they are? So here's Elm Street. So when you come out of this road right here.
Mm-hmm.
They're right, is it right here? Is it right over here? I'm thinking they're more down here.
Yeah, that is something that we can definitely take a look at and evaluate.
Should we do the parking lot?
So, but the concerns are noted, and we'll definitely evaluate that, for sure.
And does this 40,000 also include resealing and striping the current lot?
No, that is just the additional lot currently. But we would like to restripe and reseal the old lot. I know Jeff and I have talked about that. And we may have to revisit the budget a little bit to make sure that's in there. I think we thought it could fit. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Yousel, but I thought we, we, I believe our last conversation was we think we can fit it in the current budget, but is resealing and striping the old, the old lot. But again.
Yeah, and just, and just one quick comment, back to the, back to the hydrant, the bullards and everything. The, the current design for the parking lot, for the circulation needed to get people in and out of that proposed parking lot once it's paved, that, that hydrant and boulder assembly will end up being in an island. So it won't be in a, in a pathway for any vehicular circulation. It'll be kind of in the middle, out of, out of the way of what you were talking about.
I'm thinking about the rock in Springfield at the Walmart. We're just painting yellow.
We can also put a pipe baller around that.
Well, they're painted bright colors. The problem is, is that when a vehicle comes out of that alleyway and makes a turn, depending on how big that vehicle is and how big a wide a turn they gotta make, they're hitting them anyway.
A lot of that can be handled with striping as well. How you stripe the parking lot after it's asphalted to direct people where from there. I would still put up the pipe ballards there just to protect that, but striping the entrances in the parking can help that a lot.
I know what it is, I'll have to look at it.
Good question. This is old.
You can see that there is, we won't necessarily spend a lot of time on that, unless council has any questions. We were looking at a welcome sign this year. We moved that completely to next year. We'll see if we can put it next year. We just, again, we gotta make some difficult decisions this year. And I know that's something that council and the mayor's been asking about. So we moved that. The remodel of the utility building, billing, utility billing, building. I never can say that right. Say it three times. And also utility office. I like that much better. So, uh, again, that, the, the plan is to eventually remodel that, uh, potentially as a, a new home for the planning and development department. That was pushed as well. Again, it was just something that, um, I think we need to wait a year to make sure that we can afford looking at, before we start looking at that. So that was pushed to 2027. We are currently going through a evaluation. Uh, we did the RFQ and that's been, uh, if it's not been awarded, it will soon. And so we'll get the design work done, uh, at, into next year and then we'll look at the following year doing, potentially doing construction. And then, um, the city hall parking lot, that's something that we had originally in this remodel. We pushed it. We decided it wasn't affordable right now, so it's currently out in 2028 and then in, uh, 2029 is the south 160 lines or sign, so.
So just looking at, um, I actually pulled out my notes from last year and looking at different things. Last year, we'd said that the, the city welcome signs, uh, were gonna be kind of for 2027 as well. But it was gonna be 150,000 and now I see you have 300,000. Is that just because of the cost of materials or?
We didn't get official estimate, but we have spoken with some people in the industry and, um, the costs have risen from what we were originally looking at for the type of sign we were considering with the LED large sign and the things we talked about. The other thing that we, um, have to concern ourselves with now is a new location. So we're gonna have to purchase land to build the sign on. We can't put it where the current sign is anymore. So in the future, we're gonna have to also purchase land which increased that price.
Okay. Might have to have Cindy consult on that one.
I know Cindy did a good job of getting ours done.
Yep.
Um, and then there was also something about a vehicle replacement last year for 2026. Is that not gonna be a part of the administration budget anymore?
So what we've done with vehicles, um, is currently our current administration vehicle is in really good shape, so we are keeping it. They, we were originally looking at a potential vehicle, another vehicle for administration, especially in the area of communications because, uh, the amount they travel and the things they do. We have made internal decision of speaking with, with Jennifer, uh, with the changes in our, our recent procedures with finance. They do not need their finance vehicle as they did before. So that is free to up a vehicle. So we're actually just gonna take that vehicle and move it into communications. Um, and they'll be utilizing that SUV moving forward. So we're not gonna have to purchase a vehicle.
Okay.
Currently.
And I don't think, and we, and we probably don't need to replace carpet at city hall anymore either.
Yeah, no, we cut that too because, uh, took it out because of the remodel.
I'm teasing about that one because of all the other renovations we're doing.
Are we looking at outfitting that vehicle in any way?
Um, currently, there's no, nothing in the budget to do that. Um, it is, uh, a, um, it is marked with the City Nixa logo on the side, I believe. And, um, it does have open space in the back for their equipment currently.
Just mount a GoPro on top of it and call it good.
They just pull up. My thought was, either something in the back or something to where they can actually have their equipment stored in there.
Put like what they do in the back of the Tahos, the police vehicles.
If you guys got an extra one of those, that'd be cool.
People still get, get one of those, put back there, that'd be kind of cool.
That a way they're not going out of city hall. Well, it's always Donovan. He's always hauling everything out of city hall.
I'm saying something like that. I didn't say the one in the Tahoe, but something like the Tahoe that has little trays they can pull in and out and that'd be kind of cool.
I bet Mr. Colvin could build one. He'll have some free time.
Any other questions on admin? All right, next steps, please.
Mayor Council, for our capital purposes, obviously, we have a billion that's underway. Uh, that is underway and on budget. Uh, we have a lot of $32,000 for, uh, expanding our drone program. Uh, we have identified impactation moves for that that we have to use and the chief has elected to move forward with the drone and drone boxes for that. We're actually gonna be able to add two drones per week and we've just selected four additional pilots. So we'll be able to expand that program.
I know, I, I wanted to clarify it.
Body cameras, that's been in our CIPs for several years. Uh, that's been included in the operating budget. You'll notice an increase from the previous conversations about that. Uh, that's due to escalation, just the cost of the product and the program licensing. And then we also added a virtual reality turn with the officers. Um, that total project is split over five years with the Axon piece like phaser. But they're more so an industry standard now. It's gonna affect our officers and the city. We can't use our impacties for those. It's a new project in our group. We also are in the process of a body working grant by the government and many monies received from that would offset the cost, or a portion of the cost of that program. Uh, we're, uh, stand, still with that right now. Even the federal government shut down, so we'll get back to that as soon as they open doors up and I go.
We did get that submitted before it shut down though, right?
Uh, I, it may have occurred during the shutdown.
Oh.
Yeah, the federal government, um, website for that, chief has an email, uh, from Captain Wyll with that. It's kind of complicated, but I'm gonna do that here the way it reads. Not email, message here received. We, uh, hope to move, uh, to a new pistol next year with, uh, we're outside, we push that to 2027. We are in need of a new specialty vehicle for the, uh, former truck or, or MRAP is aging and, uh, near being obsolete. Uh, that's been pushed to 2027 as well.
Can we just get another one donated?
Uh, so far, we are, uh, in this Springfield region and they, uh, we have a lot of regional grants for the city. Drop on, they have access to some of that overall. We had not been able to successfully qualify our grant without the issue. I think there's, there's no, anything.
You've got, uh, in 28, an additional canine unit and.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, the additional canine, we could push to 28 and then in 2030, we'll also have to replace our body camera.
So we just replace those?
In 2020, yeah, we received news stuff this year.
Okay. This might be a dumb question, but us moving the body cameras to operational budget, I mean, isn't that part of our overall budget too somehow? Don't we have to?
It is, but the difference is the threshold of how much it costs in order for it to be qualified as a capital project. Because if it's capital, we capitalize it and all of that stuff. But the way that they are doing it, it's like a, almost like a lease.
Yeah, yeah, I understand it's spread over five years.
Yeah, the cost is only 60,000 a year and per unit, it's less than the ca- capitalization threshold. So originally, it was put in here because of the dollar amount and, and staff wanted councils to be aware that it is a five-year commitment and over five years, it will cost 300 and 3,000 dollars, but per year, it will be less.
Okay.
An additional benefit to that lease as well, um, technology is really quickly aging up. And at the two and a half year mark, our lease, we are on full removal. So that's not just one body camera for the next five years, twenty years. Updated version two and a half years later. And it's, it's not just a body camera as well. It can be real-time translation services, uh, dictation services for, for writing. Several other features that are very kind of managed for the officer, depending on where the agency and, uh, communication that we want.
Nice. Thank you.
Any other questions on police?
Not really a police question, but generally, I mean, obviously, we have a SWAT vehicle at 335. We're gonna dispose of the old one, right? Does that work in the budget anywhere or are we thinking it's 335 is the difference between what we sell ours for and lease a new one or?
So we can't sell the one we have now. It's, it's free to us through a less over program through the Department of Defense, the law enforcement, circus office. We deserve a department called the safety. Uh, we got that at no cost to us other than insurance annually and upkeep. So we have to return that to the state, uh, give it back to the, uh, federal government or we have to reassign it to another agency that doesn't have our own vehicle. The problem we're running into now with our MRAP is its age. It's, uh, we've had it since 2013. We're looking ahead to replace tires now because they're outside of the tenure by then. That's a very expensive set of tires. We're looking at about 7,000 dollars for tires on that. We've also identified leasing options for that as well, which will run us around 60,000 dollars over here.
Seven thousand is way less than 335. I was just kind of just vehicles in general, so.
Yeah, there's some other mechanical things that some of the parts are being obsolete.
Right.
And some of the, the operational factors of that vehicle is, uh, it's a rather large vehicle. You can't get it everywhere we need to. Tactics and assault on officers are way up. Tactics have changed nationwide. Our SWAT team deploys out of the army vehicle almost every officer they initiate. So being able to drive that closer to where we're going is the.
And I should have, I should have been like, really wasn't focused quite so much on there. It just happened to be the one on here. We're gonna have vehicles over and over and over. Every department's looking for vehicles, so I didn't know about selling of other vehicles. Some people have trucks, cat, uh, I think we have a dozer, backhoes.
Yeah, a lot of, that's a great question.
They're all leased.
The other departments, we will, on a lot of those, that, some of those are trade-ins. We will do a lot of trade-ins and get credit for, uh, like if we have a, a dozer that we will trade in sometimes. Um, so yes, we do take that, um, trade-in or sell. Some vehicles are so- sold, um, through an public auction. Some are on the lease program. Police department has most of their vehicles on the lease program. There's a program which those are leased and that rolls back, or sold and that rolls back into the lease. So absolutely, we do try to take advantage of any trade-in or sell that we can, um, as far as generally speaking. Yep.
So I guess I was asking, is the department trying to budget for the difference or the budget of a purchase of a new one and the other one just kind of, because we don't know what someone's gonna sell for, I'm assuming.
We have to, you have to budget for the total expense and then you budget for the offsetting revenue. So you don't budget the net. Does that make sense?
Yep, thank you.
Moving forward with that vehicle, if we move to a new vehicle, you won't be able to trade or sell it. We're just in a condition with the.
Does that program where you guys got that one not exist anymore?
It, it does exist. Uh, the frequency of those type of vehicles, uh, the military has not given anything for now.
Smart.
In those type of vehicles, the military money isn't given anymore. So typically, anything that enters into that program has been, um, uh, they've moved on from that. Its lifespan was exceeded when they got rid of it, uh, but it's still cancerous purpose so that, you know, they.
If you have to take it back, will you have to take it back to Texas?
No, uh, so we, 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 we resigned from that agency. There's twenty agencies in the third that don't have one or five that probably might add it. So we're, we're one. Uh, one of the key things about, is we are unable to do time to get that. So while we did move that project to 2027, um, once we commit to that, it's an eighteen-month build, so we're looking at, if we do it in 27, we're looking for nine years.
So we're gonna go ahead and put tires on the MRAP anyway.
That's inevitable. Um, we're gonna further process of, uh, beginning work with the branch of, of special operations side. And we're probably gonna, we'll take that vehicle down there more often to help them than we need it. And, uh, it's gonna be imperative to have a good tire on it to drive. It's a very large vehicle.
Yep, and then I'll, I'll also mention, um, just generally for all the CIP plans, because we are talking about, um, 2026's CIP purchases. Those will be within the budget, although the rest of that is a five-year plan. That plan is fluid. So just because you're seeing that before you tonight, when it comes next year, if we can afford that, that year, fantastic. If not, you know, it could be pushed or cut. It's a very fluid plan, but, um, you know, we have to have the five-year CIP plan. Yeah, just wanted to make sure council knew that.
That's why I asked questions like I was asking earlier.
Okay, moving on to streets.
Uh, the four 2026 CIP projects at the streets still have that are valid projects. Three of those are rollover projects from 2025, being the, the main street project. The old owner sidewalk project and the Cheyenne Trail project. Those are all rollover project. Uh, the remaining project is a piece of equipment, an arm mower, our current arm mower. Our current arm mower is, uh, past its years of service. It's basically, it's a farm implement that has an attachment on it that we mow right away and, and trim trees and things like that. The equipment that we're looking to purchase here is actually something that is made specifically for this. It is much more stable, being safer for the people that are operating that piece of equipment. It has several other attachments that are available for that arm that could be utilized for trimming trees higher within the right of way. Uh, it has a street sweeper attachment, a mulching attachment, several different things that could be useful in the future.
So it's been a while since I've looked at arm mowers, but, um, do, when you're buying that, is it, is it the whole arm and everything or is it just the attachments on the end of the arm?
This, this is a, a whole uni- a whole new unit.
Okay.
It is a four-wheel drive that utilizes, uh, different ways of steering. It has attachments that can go on the front of this, of this vehicle. Uh, it has attachments, different attachments that can go on the arm of this vehicle. Uh, the possibilities are almost endless with this new piece of equipment.
That explains a lot. We were discussing it today and neither one of us had a clue, so. Again, it's been a while since I've shopped for arm mowers.
And then.
But now I'm intrigued and I, I kind of want one, so.
Shouldn't they be required to bring a brochure for the cool stuff?
Yeah. Or let me, let me drive it? That and the armored vehicle?
Provide council a link to that if you'd like to see that.
I'm pretty sure you could probably take out a tree row with an armored vehicle.
Great idea, yeah.
Surely the military has some attachments for that.
Two for one, right?
There you go.
Flamethrower or? Something.
I'll, I'm gonna add on to a couple of things there. Uh, I'm sorry, Jeff, if you were done.
I think you're going right where I was going on that.
Okay, maybe. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the cuts and some of the.
It's just, it's so hard to grill him today because he looks so nice.
He looks so good.
But go ahead.
So I was gonna mention, and if Mr. Costi wants to follow up to anything, he's more than welcome, but as you can see, we had to make some difficult cuts this year. I mentioned earlier that streets is a concern. Um, quite honestly, when we first got the budget in and the CIP, streets was negative. We, we, and we can't have a negative. Uh, we have to present a balanced budget and we did not have that going in, um, when we started it. So we had to make some difficult decisions. We did have to cut a lot of operations, um, within the street department, for example. We did have, we did cut back even the ADA sidewalks a little bit from 300,000 to 250. I know I'm getting more into line items, but I just want to point out to council, we're having to make some very difficult decisions to make sure that we have a balanced budget. Uh, we've cut a few other things, um, as we did all departments. But especially in CIPs, we had to make some difficult decisions. You can see the rehab of Wasson Avenue, we end up having to cut that. That was 575,000 dollars. That is a need. We are gonna have to do that over the next few years at some point. It is starting to crumble on the sides. It needs to be redone. It's built to, not to current standards, so we just keep adding and adding and adding, um, to what's there. And so it's, it's gonna have to be repaired. Uh, we just couldn't get it in this year and so we end up cutting that or at least pushing that out. We're comfortable we can get by this year, um, with it, but it's, it's, it's definitely a need. Um, we had to cut, uh, again, the backhoe. Um, that is a trade-in program. We're gonna push that. Now it says cut. We're gonna end up pushing that out a year, so that'll, you'll see that up there later. Or at least after this meeting, we'll get that changed. But, so we end up cutting the backhoe. It'll be pushed out. Uh, the bull dozer is in need of replacement. We again had to cut that again because we, we have to get, uh, we had to get into the positive. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that council understood some of the significant cuts that we had to make to make sure that we were not in a negative in the street department. Travis, I don't know if you wanted to add to that or?
No, great job. You went exactly where I was going.
So, uh, thank you for addressing that because I was looking at this and I saw that we'd budgeted for those, like planned for those for 26 and then now we're just cut. I was gonna ask, are we pushing those? I was gonna ask, are we pushing those out? Because you mentioned we'll go the five-year thing. Along with that was the rehab for Wason was but was supposed to be for this year. And then the next few years, we have a few other streets that we were looking to rehab, but I don't even see those listed here for in our five-year plan. Are we gonna put those back in our five-year plan or those just cut indefinitely?
We need to find a revenue source to be able to do some of these. And we just don't have the money to do those, to be honest, but I'll let them.
Well, Jeff, you've come a long ways in your speaking abilities. Let's go ahead and learn about how to write grants, okay?
Oh, your mic's off, I'm sorry.
On me, sorry. And that's a great question, Mr. Lucas, because we were looking, Jeff and I were discussing right before the meeting and we're obviously gonna have to visit with Jennifer about it. There's a couple of things that are on the five-year C I P that that didn't make it on the list. They're on the they're on the budget worksheet, but for some reason, the numbers are in the notes, but they're not on the sheet. We've got, but I'll go through them real quick and hopefully next time we we bring this to you, we'll we'll have this we'll have this figured out. I think it has everything to do with BSNA decided it did not like Jeff while we were entering his budget. And everything got wacky, so the notes are there. When you go to the notes, the monies are there in the in the subsequent years, but they're not showing up on the dashboard. Anyways, and this is probably what you're seeing, Mr. Lucas. We have a we have a in addition to the rehab for Wason Drive that was originally planned for twenty-six and we have bumped till twenty-seven. We have a rehabilitation for High Ha- Hightower Street. That is a rehab that we have shown in twenty twenty-eight. We have a Sarah and Spruce Street rehab that we are showing in twenty twenty-nine. And let's see. Sorry, my eyes are.
I saw Hillcrest and Cheyenne Road.
Yep, Hightower, Cheyenne Road and Northview.
Yep.
Those have all been assigned project numbers and we've entered numbers in the. In the notes section, it shows the little N, but for some reason on the on the main part, Jennifer, it's showing zero, but when you go in the notes, it has the monies in there. So I don't know. So and and I'm sure that's why it didn't roll over onto these sheets and we just noticed it while we were eating dinner tonight. So you brought up something we were gonna we were gonna uh bring up tomorrow.
And um. I I don't want to sound like I'm repeating and repeating, but I just want to make sure in the future, we need to have a conversation about potential revenue sources to do those projects. Because right now, we we just don't have the funds to continue to do those rehab projects that we need. So we need to potentially look at some options. We do have options, we've been talking about internally. So we will have those conversations in the future with council, such as a C I P tax as a possibility, some things like that. So um. And some way to to free up some little bit of funds, maybe get some the the transfer of some of the use tax funds over, although it's minimal compared to the need, but it does help. So we're we're working on some of those things internally too.
I can see it being creative. I mean, those stuff that generates that use tax usually gets delivered on a FedEx truck or a U P S truck, so and how do they get to your house?
We'll have Jeff deliver it all dressed up.
Oh, there we go.
It'll work for tips.
Be Santa Jeff. Thank you, Jess.
Okay, ready to move on to parks?
Evening.
You guys aren't doing anything after three years, I guess, huh?
Uh, no, we're gonna do it all right now. No. Um, we've got a few things in here, of course. One of these that you see is the very first item, the twenty-four hour fitness cut. This was a request by, I believe, the mayor to kind of see what that would look like to offer twenty-four hour fitness in a facility outside of the community center. You see that it is a very large expense in that first year of operation and getting that up and running at about one point three million. Obviously Jimmy cut that.
It's cut.
It's cut. Um, but it has a very steep first-year start as you have to infill a facility. Rent for those facilities is not cheap either. After that, you're looking at about a hundred and thirty-three thousand a year in operation. And so we we budgeted out or looked at this for uh over the course of a five-year plan. But that first-year one kind of just eliminates it. I'm gonna jump just because they're somewhat related. About three-quarters of the way down on that first sheet, you'll see the community center front desk renovations. The reason these two are related is twenty-four hour fitness was also something we looked at in that renovation process. You will see that that is a million-dollar expenditure to convert the facility, move the offices to where the cafe sits. Um, I believe we kind of looked at this a little bit during the council workshop. But if that was a true real want to look at the community center, you're looking at about a million dollars. So you could actually save a little bit of money by converting the community center, although it would be nice to have a twenty-four hour fitness facility or something on the west side of town. And I think that was kind of the thought process there. I just wanted to kind of hit both of those with that. You can see the twenty-four hour fitness was cut. On the building renovation, community center renovation was moved to twenty twenty-seven as that possibility.
I like moving it to twenty twenty-seven because we can look after this next year and see where we stand with the fees and actual revenue.
Absolutely. And we we can do that. I did mention to Mr. Lyles that.
Your mic's off.
Take your hand off of it.
Hold it in my palm here. But anyways, the our front desk for MICA is in really terrible shape. If you've been into the community center here recently, you can just see the twenty-plus years of uh or almost twenty-five years now of use. So we are gonna look at trying to do that in this year's budget, just as a project before the end of the year, but we're gonna move quick.
I heard Doug does good wordwork.
I'd say Mr. Coleman's gonna have some free time.
Mr. Coleman's got all sorts of spare time.
We're gonna fill that up for you.
All right, so I'll jump back up then to the Ove Park Development. Um, as you guys recall, we do have money in this year's budget, but we did also apply for an R T P grant. And we should be getting word back very, very soon. It's supposed to be by the end of October and so we've got about ten days left, so I'm hoping to have word on that. But the only thing we could do with that project in this year while we wait for that grant funding was the design and engineering of that, which is underway, should be done in the next couple of weeks as well for us to hear back on the grant. Either way, we will be able to get started with this project in twenty twenty-six with some trails in a parking facility at the Ove property. And so you'll see that, but you'll see it in twenty twenty-six with a little bit more money. Um, as we have impact fees that need to be used and we did put those impact fees in on this particular project to give us a little bit more money for that project. McCauley Park Stripe and Seal is for the parking lot and trails that are all asphalt at the community center. Getting those a little bit later down, you'll see for Rotary Park, a Dog Park and Woodfield. So we split those over a couple of different years here. An additional park truck. Our workforce has grown and our needs are growing. We currently have three park trucks. This is an additional fourth. And we're gonna buy a bigger truck, a two fifty or larger to haul the dumping trailer and things that we bought this year. It'll be a great truck for our maintenance crew, especially as the Ove Park comes online and they're gonna have a lot more work to do out on that property. Vercata Cellular Cameras, you can maybe erase the name Vercata off that, just say cellular security cameras upgrades. This is for our parks that don't have internet or areas of parks that don't have internet, especially Rotary Park, some areas of McCauley Park. If you recall, we're using Blink cameras in some of those, which are probably great for your home use. They eat batteries and are a constant maintenance currently. And so updating to a cellular camera that can tie into our network and so that we would have a better coverage and more coverage. Currently at Rotary, we only have cameras on the bathrooms. And so this would allow us a couple more cameras to be able to put maybe down by the basketball courts, sand volleyball courts. Or even add a couple of different cameras looking in a few different directions at that park and then get something upgraded at McCauley Park as well to look at the playground and things like that that are are attached to the building. Tractor attachments, sorry, I jumped one there, so I'm gonna go back. That is to get bucket and grapples and forks and things for our current John Deere tractor. We have two. We have a John Deere tractor and a New Holland tractor. Our New Holland tractor is twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four years old and is it's just about done.
It's broken in.
What's that?
You just broke it in.
It is, yeah, it definitely broke in. And so we're continuously maintaining that vehicle as it has a lot of issues. And so upgrading the John Deere to get the additional amenities that it needs to be able to serve us at the Ove property and serve the property uh serve the rest of our parks will be what that is. And getting those on there. We did not buy that originally, but we do own the tractor and so this is just those attachments. Um, I've already mentioned Rotary Park Stripe and Seal, community center renovations, community center painting. This is the exterior painting of the facility to keep the ethos treated and looking good one, but it also keeps it weather protected and keeps our building looking good. We did this ten years ago. Yeah, that sounds right. Around ten years ago and it is most likely due again right now. We, I think originally had this in twenty twenty-six. We have pushed it to twenty twenty-seven as we're looking good, but it'd be something that we want to do to keep keep up with the building maintaining. Skatepark, as you recall, we are in design now currently and so this would just be the creation of that skatepark as pushed to a twenty twenty-seven. Resurfacing of the basketball tennis courts is a twenty twenty-seven item. Upgrading and a new uh or I'm gonna call it upgrade renovation to McCauley Park Pavilion. That twenty-three-year-old pavilion is in due is is in it's in need. And so doing some upgrades to it, going something more all-metal like you see at Rotary Park now to kind of match that would be a a welcome addition to that facility. And then you'll see a skid steer that is out to, I believe, twenty twenty-eight. And a gymnasium facility, I know we've talked about that a lot, and then a sports pavilion, all in that twenty twenty-eight run currently. Any questions? I move fast on those things that are a little ways out yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is planning and development. They don't have a twenty twenty-six project, but he does have some stuff in the subsequent four years, so you just want to mention what you've got planned there, Scott.
Yeah, I tried to take up as much time as I can on this request. Back in twenty seventeen, we started purchasing new trucks for our building inspectors and tow enforcement. So we have four trucks in in use. So starting in twenty twenty-seven, we would like to start the ten-year cycle to replacement. And then we'll do it again in twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Bueller.
Good job.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Godby.
Okay, stormwater.
Our Cherry Street Stormwater Project, that is another carryover project. Uh, an update on that, we do have all of the easements acquired on this final phase with the exception of two and Mr. Moore is working on those diligently. The stormwater upgrades that you see down there, those quite honestly can be anywhere throughout the city. We do have a couple of those projects identified that would require some engineering and then construction as well. Something I would like to mention as far as personnel and things on stormwater. Currently, street department personnel are are providing that manpower for stormwater. This is something that at some point in the future would benefit the city with a funding source for this. Quite honestly, I could take half a dozen people, new equipment, tractors, dump trucks, backhoes, what have you, and keep those people incredibly busy year-round just on stormwater things. So just food for thought. While I've got my can out begging for money, I thought I would hit that too.
That's why you're dressed up.
I don't hear it rattling.
Yeah. Was that Cherry Street project, wasn't it eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred and eighty thousand last year?
Yeah, this.
My mic's off.
Yeah, with with inflation and everything else coming up, this is a larger piece of that. Easements and things like that were a little bit more expensive for some of these properties, so yes, it is a little bit higher.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready to move on because Electric's a lot? Got a big long list. Take it away, Electric.
Like an A I summary or something?
Yeah, so I was mostly planning twenty-six. I'm glad he said what he said about being fluid. A lot of the twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven through twenty thirty numbers are they could change a lot depending on what develops, so I wasn't super prepared to go over all those projects. Most of them are identified in our uh our um system study that TOE performed in twenty twenty. And we're due due to perform another one next year, so I think some of those projects could change potentially. But in twenty twenty-six, I think um. I can cover those pretty well. We've got a rollover for a new sub land acquisition. The idea there is to hopefully acquire some land to expand the substation or potentially a new piece of property to build a new substation. But that rolls over from twenty twenty-five. A service bucket truck, that's on order currently. We're expected to have that next year should come in. Below that is an auger truck that'll replace the two thousand and four model auger truck that we have currently, but they've got a really long lead time. They're saying three to five years. I'm hoping that's not the case, but that's the word I got recently. New tractor and new bush hog. We've had our tractor at the shop twice this year for breakdowns. It's a two thousand and twelve model and it's just it's wearing out. Below that's Lee and Nicholas Tie Line. That's a project that has completed all but one piece of equipment, a switchgear that we're waiting to get here. It's on order currently. A M I meter replacement, that's a big one. Three point one million, that's what number I got from Travis from Corin Maine. The North Main Circuit, we've got design in twenty-six and then look looking to construct in twenty-seven. That would be from Tracker to C C on Main. We build a circuit up north and provide lighting at that point. The plan on that one. Underground pre-phase is to the new Oakmont Lift Station. We just have a little bit of money in there for next year for maybe easement acquisition or some additional design we need to do. And look to build that in twenty-seven. Underground pre-phase along South Truman, that goes essentially from the south side of Meadowbrook out to the Dog Park. Would be a big conductor line. We look to get rid of some old overhead that goes back through kind of to the trailer park there, cuts through the middle of Meadowbrook and then goes south to Citadel. So just get that from an area that's hard to access for reliability purposes. Lighting for sidewalk on Old Wilderness, that kind of depends on how soon they get started because I we opened the bids correct on that one. So if they get started, we may spend some of that this year, but I rolled the whole number in case they don't get started, just to cover us. New substation, this goes with the first one I mentioned. It has one point seven five in it. I don't think we'll spend that. This is basically having the money there so we can get long lead time items on order, like transformers, breakers, things are gonna take a long time to get. North Main Street, which is North Street to Highway fourteen on Main. I think that one's probably not gonna happen. It kind of depends on if Jeff ends up doing that project, but I don't I don't really think that's gonna happen, but it's in there. Then North Milton Reconductor. That's from Park Street to Northview on Milton. It's an area that's got some old number two overhead that we've had a lot of problems with. It's it's caused us some some significant outages. We want to make that bigger conductor, re-change all the poles out and improve that area. Treatment plant backfeed, I've got design in twenty-six, hope to construct in twenty-seven. That would come off. Ozark Street, is that right? Ozark Street goes south, kind of coming on the backside of Kelby Creek would would provide two feeds to the plant. So if we lost one circuit, we could get it back on with another, so that would be a a nice luxury. And then one thing that's not on here that I messed Jennifer up in our meeting. We do have another two-person bucket on order. It's E twenty twenty-three oh five that is not on here currently.
Well, it's the amount that's in the next one, three thirty-five forty-seven, that should be in twenty twenty-six because it's already on order and we got our wires crossed and I put it in the wrong column.
Which was that?
The two-person bucket truck.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, there was one from that had a twenty-five oh seven was the last numbers on it from last year.
Right. It got duped. It got duplicated and I, I deleted the wrong one. I deleted the, it's the same amount. The project got duplicated and it was in there twice and I deleted the wrong one. So it's the same amount, but it should be in the 26 column.
Okay, so this one on here is not the right one? Or they requested another one?
Same amount.
Just the wrong project number.
It's just in the wrong number and the wrong column.
Okay. Well, that's nice. It's less than what they requested last year. It was 450 last year.
Last year it hadn't.
Okay, any questions on the 26 projects?
On the AMI meter reading, we kind of had that for, last year, I was going to see that, hang on a second here. Yeah, we had that in for the 25 budget for 1.7. Have we done, used any of that or is that a complete rollover?
It's going to be a complete rollover, but there will be some funds coming out of this year. We actually bid that project in April. The project has been awarded to Core and Main. So it does have a $3 million price tag on the water side and a $3.1 million price tag on the electric side. They will begin the project, however, let me back up. We've got the contract prepared. It's actually just a waiting signature from Mr. Lyles and then Core and Main will begin the actual process of the AMI project. The first phase of that, though, is a three to four month pilot program on a 100-meter basis to make sure that, that we are able to integrate the Core and Main software with our BSNA software. We wanted to do that pilot program. So the bulk of the, of the rollout of the AMI will begin next year. However, they will begin the actual installation of some of the hardware and a 100-meter count pilot program within the next month or so. As soon as, as soon as we have that contract fully executed, Core and Main plans to schedule the meetings with our city staff and, and the utility billing process to identify where we want to look at that pilot program. And then from there, we'll start the actual installation of the initial system. But then the, the main part of the installation will begin next year. They do have anticipated a eight to nine month full deployment cycle. So hopefully the pilot program will go as designed and as expected. And by the end of the first quarter of next year, we'll be into full deployment. They're going to have a actual deployment company come in and hit the whole town. And they hope to have everything fully integrated within eight to nine months.
Thank you. Before we move on to the future, I presently need a five to 10-minute break, please. All right, moving on to the 2027.
Water?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Water and utility billing. Which utility billing, I can speak to you real quick. We just have the one kiosk that's left. I don't know that it started right now, but I don't know that it's going to be done by the end of the year. Do you know, Jimmy?
It's going to be, it's going to be close.
You just turned it off.
It's going to be close as a, as a repeat. We were hoping to have it done by the end of the year. It's probably going to either be late December or roll over into January, depending on weather. But it, it shouldn't be done before too long. We're going to carry it over, I think, just in case.
I'm sorry, the ones that we have up being used quite a bit?
I'm sorry.
Are the ones that we have up being used quite a bit?
No, not, not much. But I do anticipate this one will be utilized more because it is going to replace the drive-through that we currently have and be, provide an option for that access once the drive-through closes. So I do anticipate it'll be, and once we get AMI in, I think that's when we're really going to see the use of the, the kiosks take off. So we're really prepping for that.
Okay, Mr. Suitsman.
All right, save the best for last. Most of ours on the water and wastewater side were rollovers from last year. The dump truck was a rollover. The bids we got for the dump truck last year come in higher than what I budgeted. So I just rolled it over into this, this year's budget. The new trailer for the excavator, we bought a brand new excavator this year. It hasn't showed up yet. So to move it, we were going to, we, the, the three departments, water, electric and streets own a trailer together. But the trailer is getting old and it needs to be replaced. So I've just decided to buy a new trailer for the excavator to move it around when we needed it. The zero-turn mower, that's, depends on if I get this new guy hired to mow the lift stations, the well sites, 1010, the treatment plant and all that. If the new position doesn't get filled, then the mower can go away. Of course, AMI metering. The highway CC main, that'd be from Tracker Road to CC when Jeff's road project gets started. That was a rollover from last year. The Nixon North Loop Main, that'll go from CC Highway to Old Castle to help try to improve the water quality up in that area. The well at well site number one, our original well that was drilled back in 1948, after 70 The water tower number nine, because the bids came in so high, we are now exploring financing options to bond that. Because of that, we have been able to adjust some of the master plan requirements that were originally outlined. If you remember during our recent discussions with the Moore property, we had initially been talking about design of a water tower in the northeast area in 2032 with construction to commence after that. You'll see in this budget, fortunately, we've been able to elevate that to 29 for design and 30 to begin construction because we are taking the Ashley Water Tower, moving that into a bonding situation. We're not having to wait for those reserves to come up. So, the good, the bad news is, is that the water tower pricing has come in high enough that we've got to look at financing options. The good news is that has given us the opportunity to elevate some of those improvements and move them forward almost, almost three to five years because of the ability to take some of the strain off of reserves. So, good news, bad news.
Means I was wrong the other day, I guess, huh? Every once in awhile.
Hey, any other questions for water?
Good, thank you.
Last but not least, wastewater and recycle.
This year, the 2026 CIPs on wastewater, compost facility expansion, that'll be expanding the building up there where we make the compost. This year, we've had a spike in giving away compost for some reason this year. It's, it's gone out the door faster than we can make it. We just don't have the facilities to, to make it and store it because you have to let it set inside for 30 days before you can test it. And we're trying to keep it rolled over as fast as we can. So, we're kind of need to expand, kind of expand that facility for that. The VFD mixers for ditch number three, that will be part of that nitrogen deal I was talking about earlier. These VFDs will be able to control the rotors to slow them down or speed them up in order to try to help improve that biological removal of nitrogen when the time comes. Again, the zero turn mower, just like the water, depending on if we hire that new person. The four by four UTV for collections, we're the only department that doesn't have a four, have a UTV, so I decided that we just needed one. No, we got a new cam, we got a new camera system this year that will fit in the back of a UTV and a small pickup. So, some of our sewer lines are way out into the brush and stuff like that where you can't get a pickup and that's what that'll be used for is to get it down in there where we can camera some of the lines, especially down there all south of town around, what's that trailer park down there? Citydale and stuff. We got several big sewer lines down there that really need to be camered and we just can't get to it with a pickup truck right now. So, huh? I didn't miss the funnel blowers, didn't I? Again, that's part of the, the plant's just getting old. The blower system down there is what we use to mix the sludge up with to decant and stuff and they're just getting old and wore out and they're 20, god, 23, 24 years old now. So, we're, we've had to do a lot of maintenance on them this year and it's just time to replace them. The cure-in-place sewer line spot repair, that's kind of like the I and I deal that we do every year, but this will just be for a certain small spot where we can repair it, go in there, put that, all that resin and stuff in there, that'll seal that from the inside out and just for small areas. The southwest regional lift station, of course, it'll be bonded. Sludge holding basin, that's, we're running out of room down there. As the city grows, there's more sewer, more sludge, the basins now, we're having a hard time. We're getting plenty of fields to spread on the sludge, but when bad weather comes and we're, we can't get on the fields and we can't keep up with the centrifuge, we need more storage capacity to hold the sludge a little bit longer till we, till the land, till the, we get dry weather and we can get out there and spread. The vector truck, that'll be in 27, that'll be replacing the current one that we have. The clarifier lining, that will also be in 27. That's that project that, like we did the first one where we'll line the clarifier, repaint all the infrastructure or all the mechanical pieces to it. A new centrifuge, that'll go along eventually with the compost facility expansion where we can kind of double production on our composting. And then rebuilding clarifier three and clarifier four in 29 and 30. That plant there is, was built in 1996 and we don't really use that plant a whole lot, but it was part of the design for the 2003 plant to get us up to that four million gallons of treatment a day. So, we're rehashing plant number three to, as the future grows, as the city grows and more flow comes in, then we, we won't have to expand too much, but we'll still have to expand some.
I have a couple of questions. You said a while ago that the new vector truck was supposed to be under wastewater, but it was underwater. But last year, we had a, we had it under both. We had one for water and one for wastewater.
I don't know, yeah, it shouldn't have been because that's strictly, that's strictly a wastewater.
And they were both budgeted for 2027.
I may have split it, I may have split.
It was 3.75 for each.
Well, I probably, I split the cost then for it.
Okay.
So, take it out of water altogether?
Take it, it should be in wastewater, is what you were saying a while ago. And then you mentioned the compost facility and it looked like we had budgeted 300,000 for this year. Have we not done anything with that this year?
No, it was one of them that just, we just couldn't get time to get it started.
And then the sludge holding basin, you budgeted a million dollars this year. Do we not do anything with it this year?
No, because after I got the, after the engineering report come back and the estimated cost, the one million dollars won't touch it.
Okay, that's why it's up to 3.4.
That's why it's up to 3.75.
Yeah, we fully intended to build that this year. Last year, whenever we did the budget, we weren't quite done with the design of it. We finished design in the first half of this year and once they got design and started talking to contractors on anticipated price, it grew from a one million dollar to project to a 3.4 million dollar project. So, we decided not to even attempt to bid it out this year and then during discussions on, on the water tower and the lift station, we decided that it would be in the best interest to roll that into our bonding program that we're exploring right now.
Thank you.
And then on the recycle, the limb drop-off, we are getting ready to start that here pretty quick. And then the equipment building for the recycle center, we moved it to 27 because it's, it's not really a necessity, it's just kind of a want, so.
Mayor Council, as we, as you look over this, the CIP and expect, especially the five-year CIP plan, just, we will be taking that CIP plan to P and Z, first meeting in November. So, any comments that you might have, we would appreciate it for that time, so we take the most updated plan to P and Z to look at the infrastructure improvements.
November 2nd, right? No, November 3rd will be that meeting, right? Scott? Is that November 3rd? No, November 4th. Yeah, 3rd, so on Friday, yeah. Okay.
Okay, that's all I had to present to you tonight is, I know it's a lot and it's, you know, this is just our first meeting about it next week. I will take the feedback that we have had tonight and some of the corrections I need to make and we'll have a presentation next week at the regular council meeting. And then every meeting until the end of the year, we will be talking about budget. So, anything that you want to discuss further, please get with the mayor or Mr. Lyles and they will relay that to me and we will work out, you know, whatever direction you see fit.
And next week, our council meeting is on Monday. So, we have the state of the community on Tuesday. Any other questions or anything from council? Anything else from staff? I do want to thank everybody for all your work and, and understanding on kind of the importance of, of this year's budget and the main goal. Definitely getting everyone closer to where we need to be from a pay standpoint. We can plan out as many projects as we want, but if we don't have the people to do it, there's no point in spinning our wheels. So, I do appreciate that a lot. And I also want to thank council for your feedback and make sure if you have any thoughts over the next couple of days or so, let Mr. Lyles or myself or both of us know. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. I do my best to be available at any time.
Jennifer, could you send that PowerPoint to us? I mean, I tried to take some notes, but you were kind of rolling through them.
Yeah, yeah, that definitely helps.
Just the locks taken.
Yeah. So, thank you again for your time and, and for staying here so late and I hope it was entertaining for all of you. If nothing further, meeting adjourned.